I have six o'clock, so we're gonna get started. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Como?
Yeah.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Here.
Mr. Jimenez?
Here.
Ms. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Meyer? One second. Mr. Corburg?
Here.
Mr. Spivey? Mr. Spivey?
Absent. I haven't, I haven't heard from Mr. Spivey.
Okay. Mr. Turner?
Well, I thought he was excused, but it looks like he may be here.
Yeah, it looks like he's joined us. Can't tell you there?
I am, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Baines? Mr. Baines?
Absent.
Okay. We'll mark him as excused.
Okay.
And then Mr. Baggett?
Here.
Thank you.
So, Quorum of the Board of Education is present. The regularly scheduled meeting of February 15th, 2021 is called to order. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the board. A motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and second of Ms. Como to approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. Hearing no motion to amend, we'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Hi.
Mr. Jimenez?
Hi.
Ms. Leahy?
Hi.
Mr. Lee?
Hi.
Mr. Corburg?
Hi.
Mr. Turner?
Hi.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Hi.
We have no public speakers registered for this evening, so we will move to consent agenda announcements if there are any.
Yes, we do have a few announcements and I will turn it over to Mark White.
So we do have two retirements on a rather short HR consent agenda tonight. The first is the retirement of Mike Esser, who is a music teacher at Central High School. Mike's been with the district for 31 years, beginning in August of 1990. All 31 years have been at Central High School. And for those of you that know of Mike's work and what he's done there, just absolutely amazing work with the Robe Choir and the Show Choir. And we have the unintended benefit tonight of Mr. McDonald being with us and I did not ask him ahead of time. But if Mr. McDonald has anything that he would like to add, I certainly would, I would think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. White. Yeah, Mr. Esser has brought a level of excellence to Central High School and the, the music, the vocal music program that is just truly unprecedented. He is an amazing educator and truly cares about kids and the relationship that he has developed with kids. Not only the kids that are presently in school, but we have students coming back from 20, you know, years ago, just looking to see Mr. Esser. It's just amazing what he's done at Central High School. So he's fantastic. He certainly will be missed.
And the second retirement, I will let our Director of Elementary Education talk about one of our principals who is retiring.
Good evening. It's my honor tonight to announce the retirement of Laura Huber, Principal of Northside Elementary in Cooley-Montessori. After 36 years of dedicated service to the students in Wisconsin's public schools. Laura and I were both hired together in 2010 as principals in the district, so I've had the distinct pleasure and privilege to work alongside her for all of her 11 years with the school district of lacrosse, and I consider her a valued colleague and friend. She brought considerable skills to that position that were honed over many years. In 1985, she began her career in the Madison School District, where she worked as a high school special education teacher, an elementary teacher, and a math resource teacher. In 2008, she was hired as the Assistant Principal at Leopold Elementary in Madison, where she led teams in implementing PBIS mindfulness and partnered with school neighbors to bring about a community schools approach. Since coming to the district, Laura has accomplished much and she will leave a legacy that includes working with district staff in 2014 to design and build the beautiful facility that we know is Northside Elementary and Cooley-Montessori Charter School. This included the merging of both Franklin and Roosevelt Elementary Schools and supporting the development of a building culture that reflects the pride they all have in being part of the Northside community. If you walk through the Northside Elementary, you will see even the physical structure honors the previous neighborhood schools. In 2016, Northside Cooley-Montessori officially became a community school. And a short while later, the Northside calendar was changed to reflect year-round schooling. For the past four years, Laura has collaborated with UWL to develop and implement a trauma-informed schools approach. And Laura has worked with teams throughout the district at Northside and in the community to develop and implement a comprehensive team approach to problem solving in order to increase positive behaviors through the lens of equity. One of Laura's last evaluations stated, "It's my distinct honor to work with people like you, Ms. Huber. Your support of kids and staff are evidenced in all that you do. It is this kind of genuine care you have for those you lead that make you so special. Thank you for all you do." While I didn't write that, I couldn't agree more. And these are just a few of the highlights of what has been an impactful career that will be held in our district, our community, Northside Cooley-Montessori for many years to come.
Thank you to the board for allowing us to recognize two of our retiring excellent educators tonight.
Thank you. So the consent agenda is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Are there any items that members want to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, then I'll entertain a, a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
A motion's been made by Mr. Corburg and second by Mr. Turner to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented. We'll now have a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Hi.
Mr. Jimenez?
Hi.
Ms. Leahy?
Hi.
Mr. Lee?
Hi.
Mr. Corburg?
Hi.
Mr. Spivey?
Hi.
Mr. Turner? Dr. Cooperstol?
Hi.
So we'll now move to the approval of the board consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the board consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion's been made by Mr. Corburg and second by Ms. Como to approve the items on the board's consent agenda unless there are any items that members want to have removed. Hearing now, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Hi.
Mr. Jimenez? Mr. Jimenez?
Hi.
Thank you. Ms. Leahy?
Hi.
Mr. Lee?
Hi.
Mr. Corburg?
Hi.
Mr. Spivey?
Hi.
Mr. Turner?
Hi.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Hi.
All right, we're now going to move to the operational expectation OE3 treatment of community stakeholders.
I will make a motion to, in regard to the monitoring report for policy OE3 treatment of community stakeholders. And with respect to the provisions of policy BSR5 Superintendent Accountability, the Board of Education concludes that the superintendent and district are in compliance.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and second by Ms. Como. Then in regards to the monitoring report for policy OE3 treatment of community stakeholders and with respect to the provisions of policy BSR5 Superintendent Accountability, the Board of Education concludes that the superintendent and district are in compliance. Are there any discussion around this report that previously came forward? Then we're gonna move to a vote.
Ms. Como?
Hi.
Mr. Jimenez?
Hi.
Ms. Leahy?
Hi.
Mr. Lee?
Hi.
Mr. Corburg?
Hi.
Mr. Spivey?
Hi.
Mr. Turner?
Hi.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Hi.
Okay, we'll now turn to the information portion of the meeting and we'll begin with results R3 involves Citizenship Section 3. And I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Engel.
Thank you all. We discussed this last month as well, or last, last board meeting as well. And this is a unique process because we're not approving all of the, the results policy. We're just looking at a portion of it. And so in consultation with Laura and Dr. Cooperstol, we talked about what might be the best process and we would look at marking up each piece and then approving them as a whole at a regular time during the course of the school year, once we have all the pieces put together. And so what we're looking for tonight is a way to notate the board's assessment of our reasonable progress on these items. And so certainly open to any questions about those measures that have been provided as evidence. And Dr. Lahackey can talk about how we've updated those a little bit. But then we're in this unique spot where we don't really have sufficient evidence to really measure a lot of those, those items. And so we want to make sure that we're transparent with the public. We're transparent with ourselves about what's going on here. And so a yes or no may be difficult to identify. And so that's why we've put in, for now at least, insufficient evidence due to impact of COVID-19 pandemic. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lahackey to talk about some of the adjustments based on comments from board members in our last meeting. And then I open up to the board to discuss how you would like to mark this accurately as we move forward.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So there are some updates from the first time I presented earlier in the month. If you'll notice that each of the indicators has one page that's just focused on the last year's data that would help make decisions of the yes or no. Unfortunately for indicator one, you see NAs because we did not take the Wisconsin Forward last year. That was during the time that we were all mandated to be in a virtual education. So the state assessment last year was not taken by anyone in the state. However, if you look at the second page, what we have is more of a longitudinal look. And you can see the aggregate of grades three through eight together. And then we also have it by each individual grade level, three through eight. And this is the Wisconsin Forward Writing section, Advanced and Proficient together. The highlighted columns are lacrosse and the white columns are the state average for comparable. It is, it is interesting and you're able to do this to a limited degree is to track cohorts. So you could look at like the 2018 third grade, we had 41% Advanced and Proficient. And if you look at 2019 fourth grade, you can see that number's 44%. So within this chart, although it's not specifically laid out in that format, you can track some cohort performance. Given three years of data, you would have a better opportunity to do so as well. The bottom half of the table has it disaggregated by different reference groups. And so that one you, doesn't necessarily have a year-to-year, like where you'd have to move from one grade level to the next. But in the case of Hispanic, you can see that 32% were at that Advanced and Proficient. And students who identify as Hispanic in 2019 were 24%. I would caution that we do have lower sample sizes when it comes to our disaggregated data. So you may see more variance in those scores when, when they are broken down. But it does give you some indication of, of progress over the last three years. The second indicator is the ACT writing, which is taken by our 11th graders. And once again, that first cover page for indicator two is all NA because that assessment as well was not taken by all 11th graders. Some, the, the, the first round was in there, but not the full 11th grade class. If you look at the writing, the longitudinal data, you can see the 2018 and 2019 results. What's interesting in this, these results is that you saw a flat score, a flat average of 6.2 for each of the years. But if you look at our reference group data, it was mostly improved and, and with our reference groups overall. The third indicator is classroom participation. So the first two indicators were focused on writing results. And without a formal, let's say, speech class that's required or oral communication class that's required at maybe our high schools, we had to look for a different measure to help with more of an oral component to communication. And we landed on, let's include our elementary students with a standard that we have of, for our learning skills category of our school report card, standard-based report card. And it is participates in classroom discussions and activities and everyone that was meets or progressing towards expectations. And you can see we do have the data from this year. So this is the, the fresh data from the end of quarter two. And that is the percent by cohort, not cohort, by, by grade level. And then also you have it disaggregated by different reference groups. An interesting piece is the second page. So the second page of the report card data has our three-year look. And here's an opportunity where we actually do have the full three years to look at. And you can see that the participation levels were, we're pretty flat between 2019 and 2020. But we did see a sharp drop for the 2021 due to the online and virtual learning environments. You could see we dropped 6% overall. And you could see that grades four and five, so our older elementary students were the ones that had less engagement in classroom participation than our younger students overall. You can see that those results for the last three years for our disaggregated reference groups. And you can see a, a even greater, usually between a 5 and 10% drop in classroom participation there. Which is troubling, right? Because if we're focused on closing gaps, that engagement in classroom participation is going to have, likely will have an impact on achievement in the future. So those are the three indicators broken up a little bit differently. And thank you for having me tonight.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Lahackey? Thank you for going through that with us, Dr. Lahackey. The next item under the information section of the agenda is to discuss the Central High School mascot.
If I could just go back to the last item, I would just, I'm curious if the board feels the, a similar statement would be appropriate for the board's side of that evaluation. In sufficient assessment evidence due to impact of COVID-19 pandemic. We would be able to note that now because this is when we've monitored it. We would save this sheet for when we fully monitor the results policy three. I'm just curious, Dr. Cooperstol, if you think it's appropriate to mark those with that now or the, what the board's thinking is?
I believe that, Laura, is that what you sent me to look at last week? Yes. I've seen it and I don't have any issue with this. Any board members, do you have any concerns?
Okay, thank you.
We're now gonna talk about the mascot at Central High School.
Excellent. Thank you. This is something that has been in the works for a little while. And I will let Mr. McDonald talk about the process and where we're at and where we intend to move forward after this.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Engel. Thank you for having me on. I would like to thank Dr. Engel and his staff for supporting us in this journey. What we, what we, everybody knows we retired the previous mascot and name. So what we did is we started on a journey. We let all our students and staff make suggestions for what could possibly be new nicknames. And we had some great ideas and some that were less than appropriate. But we took suggestions from everybody. And then when we had this large group, then we allowed a group of students to then vote on, you know, what those top, you know, thinking originally probably top 10, we ended up with a very clear top eight. Then we put those top eight choices back out to students and staff and let them vote on the top eight. The top vote getters, Chargers was fourth. Titans was third, Bandits was second, and then our top choice was Riverhawks, which finished first. So then after we had a clear winner, we then asked some people, some graphic artists to come up with some different versions of a logo. And they came up with six logos. We put that back out for student vote and staff vote. And we came up with a winner there. So we're kinda ready to move forward.
Are there any comments or questions from the board as it relates to the process for how we got here?
Mr. McDonald, I appreciate the way that you sought feedback from the central community and coming up with suggestions for the mascot and then voting on the logo as well.
Thank you. No, that's, I felt it's important because, you know, moving forward, this is something, you know, our, our previous logo and nickname has brought a lot of pride to Central. But as we move forward, I really wanted this to be something that our students and staff would feel a great deal of pride and support for.
I, I do have to admit that I had to look up what a Riverhawk was.
The mighty Osprey.
Are there questions or comments for Mr. McDonald?
I just want to thank Mr. McDonald too for letting us know of the process, which it looks like you came up with a, a, a good, a good new mascot. Will the, the, the letters LC, will that still kind of remain the same? And the color, kind of the Pantone color gonna stay the same too, or?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Corburg. That's been a question that's been commonly asked. We are gonna keep the same red and black. The new logo will, you know, have those same colors. And yes, the LC, that's something we've been using for quite a while. And actually, the last couple of years, we've kind of talked about using that as our main logo. So that, that is something that will continue to move forward.
So when will this actually take, has it taken effect already? Or when will we start seeing teams with these, with the new logo?
And yeah, that's, you know, I mean, as long as we get permission, I'd like to move forward with that. And actually, we're looking at even our, you know, our traditionally fall sports, which will be our first spring sports. Have actually asked for permission to start moving forward using that new mascot. But just kind of waiting so that we have approval to move forward.
Okay, thank you again.
Dr. Engel, that approval comes from administration, yes?
That is correct. Yep, it's an administrative level decision. We wanted to make sure that we brought it to the school board for an information item first before we move forward though. It would be hate, we would hate to get ahead of ourselves on this sort of thing. So I believe, you know, Mr. McDonald's passed it by some in our alumni groups and we've heard from others. And, you know, anytime you're changing a mascot, it can be very difficult. But I have heard not a lot of pushback and maybe Troy could expand on that a little further about just community involvement, where you've sorted out and what that might sound like.
Yeah, and for the past couple of years, we, I've been talking to both community members, parent groups, students, even staff, and we have a lot of staff who are alumni. And those have been really interesting conversations. But just, you know, I mean, they're, it, the support has varied at different levels for this change. Obviously, there's a lot of pride and a lot of tradition that goes into that past mascot. As a former Central student, somebody who has coached at Central and now is a principal, whatever, I certainly understand that pride. But, you know, I mean, this does not diminish the pride that people have had. And I think all the people who have pride in the previous logo is well-intentioned and it's, it's a very positive thing. But in order to make Central a safe place for everybody, I felt that we needed to move forward. And so I think this is the next step. But it's, you know, I mean, the, the previous logo and nickname is one that I, all the, all the previous alumni, I believe should feel pride in. But I'm hoping they continue to support our move forward as we try and make Central a safe place for all students.
Yep, our next steps are to probably have a, some sort of version of a grand opening for mascots and, and, you know, let folks know. We'll get out some spirit wear and other things, you know, for kids to start celebrating. It will be a process to change over. Equipment and uniforms and, and logos and things. It is not a cheap process. It is a good one. It is one that we will invest in. But it's usually not something that happens overnight. Often involves sanding gym floors and, and taking out bricks here and there, depending on the amount of commitment you've had to your previous logo. So it'll be a bit of a process that we space over months and maybe even years to do it in a, in a financially responsible manner. Anytime we change out uniforms, we'll get new logos. We have a few more logos to generate as well. You know, you, you get the first one, but then there's all these different ways it has to be put on items, band uniforms and baseball hats and all that stuff. So it'll be a bit of a process, but sooner than later, we want to be able to celebrate this. So thank you, Mr. McDonald.
You bet. And I will say, Dr. Engel, we've, for a couple of years have focused on, you know, that LC logo with the idea that this transition may happen. And so I don't think the impact will be as significant, but there are going to be things in terms of some marble floors. We have a lot of signs that I think will be fairly easy to replace. We've ordered some stickers. You know, I mean, band uniforms, I think will be, you know, certainly a cost. But, but I'm hoping that we have minimized that a little bit with some being proactive thinking.
I just want to say, this is Shandell, by the way.
I just want to say, this is Shandell, by the way, thank you for, for moving this work along. I always look at this as an opportunity, when we take action, to right wrongs is really important, and so my question for you, as we move forward to, you know, the hurrah rah celebratory pieces, are there any plans to also acknowledge how this may have hurt folks in the past and apologize for that, and then be able to also celebrate how we move forward?
Yeah, thank you, Shandell. We previously had talked about the idea, for instance, one of the things we've added to our main gym, our competition gym, is the whole chunk flag, and we were actually working with the whole chunk nation to try and do a ceremony, and then obviously COVID affected many things, and we were talking about during our, having a diversity day and including the whole chunk nation, and doing actually a ceremony to acknowledge that. So I think, you know, obviously, as we move forward, yes, we do want to talk about, you know, embracing what has happened in the past and moving forward and how we can, you know, move forward from that, but I, I certainly want to work with Mr. Greengrass and the whole chunk nation to move forward.
Yeah, Mr. Spivey, I could see kind of like a land recommend state, recognition statement, but kind of a history recognition statement. Here's our new logo, this is what we had previously and how we got here, and just recognizing that we've made change and that some people may have been harmed or were harmed in that process.
I like that. I think that's really, I think that is extremely important, and when we talk about communities of color and those that have been marginalized and oppressed, to see that and to hear that and to feel that acknowledgement is really important, and so I'm, I hope that you all move forward with that.
And Mr. Spivey, I will share with you, one of the things that I neglected and I apologize, you know, when we got the initial group of, of, you know, finalists for the names, I did share that out with some of our clubs, including GSA, our Indigenous People Club, our Fem Club, et cetera, just making sure that there wasn't anything I was missing. Being an older white male, there's sometimes things that I don't fully understand, and so, you know, I asked them to sign off on their, on those names and make sure there wasn't something that I was missing that would be inappropriate or offensive.
Great work, yeah, thank you.
All right, any final comments or questions before moving forward? All right, thank you again, Mr. McDonald, for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me.
All right, we're now going to move to announcements, and we'll begin with our student reps to the board. I believe both student reps are with us this evening, so, Mr. Baggett, would you like to go first?
Sure, not much to report. People are back in school with hybrids, which a lot of people are excited about, seems to be going pretty well. I'll have some more info on that as I talk with Mr. Janie Waco soon. That's about all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Baggett. Mr. Baines?
Pretty much the same thing. Back in school, it's awesome, I'm very happy to be back. A lot of the teachers that I've spoken to are very happy to be back and seeing students. I know that a lot of our teachers have struggled to not be in the classroom where they enjoy, and that's their passion. So I think it's good to be back, and everyone's pretty happy about that. Student Senate is continuing to fundraise for our scholarships for, I think, we had a share morning a while back with the Breakfast Club, which went well, and then in early February, we had another share morning with Cool Beans Coffee Shop. I think we are looking at partnering with more businesses in our community to continue fundraising for our scholarships, and hopefully going back to some of our traditional, like, selling things at lunch and concessions to fundraise, now that we're back in school.
Thank you, Mr. Baines. Do we have any announcements from Ms. Como?
Oh, well, we had our CISA four meeting, and one thing that they went over was one of the programs that they've created this year, which is a principal mentoring program. So for some of the smaller districts where they don't have a lot of depth to be able to mentor between the many schools, CISA four is creating that ability to partner with somebody at that level and go throughout the year with them to, to help them first get initially set up, and then checking with them throughout the year to kind of make sure they're meeting their goals. So that's really a nice thing there. It sounds like CISA four is one of the first CISA's in the state to be doing that, so this may be a pilot for others to follow. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Como. Mr. Corbir, do you have announcements for us?
Yeah, I have three things tonight. First off, you may recall that I had mentioned that the foundation is now into the, well into the Random Acts of Kindness Forever Fund, $325,000 has been raised so far. On a sadder note, one of our co-chairs, Roger LaGrand, died a week ago today, and he was very involved with this latest endeavor. He's also was on the foundation board for six years, and he was a former two-time member of the Board of Education back when, I think he was on one of the recalls back in the early, early 90s or so, but a good pillar in the community, but you can still put money toward the Random Act of Kindness Forever Fund, which again will fund the programs throughout the district, and it's rakforever.org is the, is the web address, or of course, you go to the foundation page and you'll see it there too. Second thing, reminder that the grants award ceremony is Monday, March 8, and there's four locations, Logan High, Logan Middle, Central, and Lincoln. Events free, but you do have to register because they want to make sure that they can maintain social distancing, and that can be registered again for free at the foundation website. And then the final thing is that it's spring grant application time, and there's $40,000 that's available for our students and staff and students to, to take on projects if they want to write grants for. It's been extended a little bit, it's now, the deadline is March 29th, so we are hoping that we will have some good grants to look at come at the end of the month of March. Again, it's $40,000, that's a little over the half than that the Education Fund is, is doing for the, for the fiscal year. So, a lot of good things coming out from the foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Corbir. The only announcement I have for this evening is that we'll be returning to in-person board meetings next week. If you recall, not next week, but our next board meeting, and as you recall, one of the things I said was that we would do our board evaluation at the end of February, but since we had to go back online for this meeting, I pushed it to the next meeting so we can be in person when we do it, and I'll send some additional instruction about that when we get closer to time. Dr. Engel, do you have any announcements?
I would just like to announce that we are, you know, fully reopened in the hybrid model for middle and high school at this point. I would echo Mr. Baines' comments, I believe it is going well, and, you know, there is certainly some nervousness out there, you know, we still are operating in a pandemic, but by and large, we've been able to maintain very low rates of infection and very, very few issues relating, regarding contact tracing. So kudos to our staff and our students for following the procedures and helping us out. Kudos also to our community, we've seen a decline in cases in our community, which is encouraging. It will take some diligence, though, to maintain that, and I know we all have some COVID fatigue, so hopeful that we can all continue to pitch in until we get everyone the opportunity to be vaccinated. The CDC released guidelines for schools last week Friday, and we were encouraged to see that they align with our practices as they exist already, where our following of the Harvard Global Health Institute's model aligns very, very closely with the CDC's recommendations, and so we feel like our plan was kind of confirmed by the CDC, and we feel good about where we're at right now. There's a few minor recommendations in there we're looking at, but by and large, we often exceed the recommendations in that plan, so that is reassuring. And then lastly, just let you all know that we're working with the county on a vaccination plan for staff in education. The soonest staff are eligible in education at this time, as it's predicted, is March 1st, and, you know, we've seen in the news already that, you know, the supply of vaccine is, is low, and that while, you know, we may want to vaccinate everyone on March 1st, that's likely not going to be a reality, and so we're just letting folks know that we've got a good plan in place, we'll have more detail soon, but it's really dependent on the vaccine and that, you know, unless there's, you know, a boatload more coming, it's going to take us a little while to get through, folks. So hopefully, people are understanding and patient, and we know that there's a lot of anxiety around that and excitement, but we're, we're developing plans and cautioning against too great of emotion as it relates to, to that plan. So, good things in the works, good things are happening, excited for, for school and what's to come shortly, so that is all I have.
Are there any other announcements? All right, we're going to move to agenda planning.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 1st 2021 Board of Education agenda with any additions or corrections.
Thank you.
All right, motion's been made by Mr. Corbir, and second on, Mr. Spivey, to approve the March 1st 2021 Board of Education agenda with any additions or corrections. We'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Martinez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Corbir?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooperstall?
Aye. All right, we'll now move to board briefing, and Mr. Spivey, I say that you are the facilitator for this evening.
Yes, indeed. Hello, everyone. You know, I just wanted to kind of open the floor and just check in with everybody, see how everyone's doing, and feeling about how the meeting went today. I wasn't here last week, so if you want to bring in what happened last week too, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, naturally, I think we, we always have a very good meeting, a lot of, lot of insight. You can tell people do their due diligence and reading over the material before we come to the board table, because I don't know if no discussion is really a good thing all the time, but it does seem like people are, we, we, we take our time and we ask the right questions. So I think we had a really good meeting, it seemed to be productive and it flew very well, so very, very sad about Laura Huber, to be completely honest, but otherwise, I think we, we had a good meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to touch on that, that I'm glad that we have an opportunity each time when we have some retirements to hear about them and, and what, what those individuals have done in, in our, our schools as well as our communities. Two of the individuals mentioned tonight, Mr. Esser and Ms. Huber, were, were talked about very well and very eloquently, and we will miss them. They, they've been both pillars in their, in their schools where they, they've taught, and then as well as in the community. You know, Mr. Esser has done wonderful things at Central, where their choirs are always wanted to be, community asked for them to be performing, pre-pandemic, and I'm sure it'll be post-pandemic as well. And then Laura has been great for, for the Northside School, where that wasn't the easiest thing to do, was to pull two schools together, but she did it and worked on that, and also on top of that, oh, by the way, created a community school, and then went year-round on top of it. So a lot of moving parts there that I, that I think she, she came, came and pulled things together. And then I just want to mention that I'm, I'm glad for what, what Central worked on and how they approached the process to, to look at their name change and to, to move forward and, and come up with a good-looking logo and a good name.
Any final comments before we?
I, I can say I appreciate Central's name change process, it's quite interesting to go through that, and which kind of, there's, I understand the emotion and the resilience to change sometimes, and I have to kind of then jump over to talking about Laura Huber, where she too had to go through that. When I first met her, I was the PTO president at Roosevelt, and she was there when we were trying to combine the two PTOs, which was interesting in its own right, and she was principal between the two schools, so she would actually walk the kids from Franklin to Roosevelt and vice versa, depending on, on what was going on. So if you can imagine the principal walking, doing a walking group between the two schools, she was eloquent in the way that she would deal with politics of Cooley-Montessori and Franklin and Roosevelt, and, and then coming up with, bringing the two schools together, and, and actually, at the time, not only bringing the two schools together physically, but first, they had to do it on books. So we had Franklin and Roosevelt, and we, as a peer group, along with community members and teachers and, and old students, had to come up with a new school name, and, and decide on that, and whether, so Northside was the one, there were so many choices, so I understand that naming thing, and, and then we had a doctor come along and say, hey, I'd like to put a clinic in your new school, and she was open to it, along with Mr. White, and, and we were able to create the Northside, your Northside Neighborhood Clinic, so we were able to give free medical to the kids and to the staff, and so she's been very open, let alone what she's gone through in her personal life. So she's an amazing person, I've known her personally, as you can well tell, and she will be greatly missed, so I just want to say that to her.
And before we close out, Lori, if you don't mind, quick thing, the educator in me just wants to hear from everybody, so if we could sum up in one word how we feel tonight went, and just popcorn and say the next person, so I'd just go with optimistic. I think when we start moving into our future and looking at bringing in new folks, it's always really good to start bringing in new energy and new people into our district, in our community. Oh, sorry. Brenda, Ms. Leahy?
I would say proud of our district of making some of the choices that we're making that might be difficult, and very happy that schools, it, it seems to be going well, that school is back, and love to seeing the baby, so thank you. I'm not very good at the popcorning, okay, Juan?
I think I would agree with optimistic in what is to come, and glad that students are back in the buildings, and hope that this will be a good end to the school year as opposed to the way that it began, and so then I'll turn it over to Peely.
Yeah, I think I'm actually pretty hopeful, you know, of all the things that are happening and the new, new that are coming along, and just to let you all know that, you know, it's just the beginning, you know, and it's the first step, and we're really, you know, doing the bare minimum, you know, and this is just the first step, so I'm really hopeful.
For Mr. Baggett?
I'm really happy to be back in school, and I'm happy to see student involvement in creating a new logo, always great to, to student voice, determine something. Popcorn, Mr. Baines?
I would describe myself as content. I think the way the board is handling COVID- I think the way the board is handling COVID and a lot of the issues that we've brought up recently, like the SRO program and this mascot change, I think the way they're handling it is very well, is very good. And I'm optimistic for the future as well. I think that the reforms that we're making will only benefit our community and that we should push for further improvements to our district. Popcorn, Mr. Turner?
I would say, word for me would be solace. I think I, I found comfort and conciliation in our time of distress and sadness that is COVID. And we have just, we've really, really outdone ourselves. I'm really proud of the, the team that we have around the table, as well as Dr. Engel and his administration, for just, in this hard time, just finding a way to, to get through. And it is, it's very hard to, to please everybody. So I would say I find solace and, and comfort in, in our time of sadness and distress and then hope that it, it, it goes away and then we get back to some kind of sense of normalcy. So solace would be my word. Dr. Lori Cooper-Stoll?
I have nothing to add to, to that. I look forward to the board evaluation at our next board meeting and getting to have these discussions in a little more in-depth. Mr. Corbett, have you had a chance to go yet before we move on?
No, I probably would use the word nostalgic, which may seem weird because we, Central is, is not going to be the Red Raiders anymore. But the word nostalgic means a lot to me as far as that, I think there's a lot to be said about school history. And I think we saw that tonight with both individuals we talked about who were retiring. And it, it's not so much of a name, it's more of the people that are in, who are inside the building. And, and to me, that's, that's, gives me a, a sense of nostalgia, that, that there's, there's some consistency there and, and something good about it going on. Ms. Como, did you have a chance yet?
No, but I'm gonna actually, you took mine, I, kind of. I was gonna say reminiscent, going back, thinking about those great people that have been not only within our schools but on our board. And being forward-thinking enough to be, as our board is, to be okay with looking at our past and learning from it. So we've taken what we've seen in our past in our schools and we have tried to kind of flip the script and make things a little bit better for our kids. So thank you for that. How about Dr. Engel?
I'm not on the board, so I'll pass today. We got some closed session to do and I'm excited to get to that.
All right, so with that, let's move into preparing for the closed session. So the Cross Board of Education will consider a motion to move into closed session on Monday, February 15th, 2021, immediately following the Board of Education meeting, virtual, only pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Como and second of Mr. Jimenez to move into closed session. We'll have a roll call vote taken.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Mr. Jimenez?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooper-Stoll?
Aye.
All right, so this meeting is adjourned and board members, please hang out. Bye, Mr. Baines, Mr. Baggett, board members.